Okay. A call meaning to order. Please read the law. Reverend Childs?
Here.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Dr. DeCobert?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Ms. Laun?
Here.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Here.
Ms. Shear? Here. Please stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Please go red. Already worked this?
Yeah, just for this little.
So we don't need them?
Yeah, no, they're still.
Got it. Turn it off.
Please go red. If she's got a green, please go red.
Oh, it just went off.
You don't have to turn it off. It was turned on.
Motion to executive session for purpose of collective bargaining under the Taylor Law, TTF, EST, CSEA, and ASPA, matters relating to employment of particular individual or individuals, employment history of particular individual or individuals or corporations, and proposed acquisitions or lease of real property in force to substantially affect eligibility thereof.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And would you be tempted to accept a public session as close to seven as possible?
Okay. All public session order. We have three resolutions coming out of executive session.
Go green.
Go green. Resolution DOE forty-five, do you resolve that the board hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to sign employment-related agreement regarding the resolution of SED case number thirty-three five eighteen as presented to the board at this meeting. A copy of said agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. All entertain motion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Next. Twenty-eighteen DOE forty-six, do you resolve that the Board of Education hereby appoints Stephen A. Spicer as member of the Board of Education to fill the vacancy caused by the resignation of Danielle Guido effective February sixth, twenty nineteen, and until the next annual election of board members, May twenty-first, twenty nineteen. All entertain motion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions. And next.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
I'm just sorry.
I'm not the new here.
This is the new shear. Just to make it easier for you to follow along. So if they repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of the Kingston City School District Court of Education.
Of the Kingston City School District Court of Education.
As trustee according to the best of your ability.
As trustee according to your best of my ability.
Thank you. I would sign my name.
Do I get to say something or do I have to wait for public comment? I already lost the privilege.
Well, you're not restricted to just two minutes.
And we'll let you know when you're approached.
But if we could put that in all of the units.
Oh, I can. Oh, thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
I wrote it down. First, as I stated in my letter of interest to serve on the board, I wish to extend the prayers and good wishes for speed recovery for Danielle. As I have observed, she served the board and the school district with all of her energy and heart. Her fine service is a matter of record. Second, I want to thank you all for your vote of confidence and look forward to our work ahead for the children and families of the Kingston City School District.
And I still have one resolution coming out of executive session. And that DOE forty-seven, do you resolve that the board does hereby approve the terms of special education settlement agreement pertaining to the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, and twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school years inserting student number zero-two-zero-six-one-nine? All entertain motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
And that brings us to first opportunity for public participation.
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, absolutely.
Sorry, do you have an extra printed agenda?
Yes, we've already passed it.
Okay. That's important. I don't know if anybody has signed up, but the policy governing public participation is on podium, so it's fixed the podium. We have two minutes. We do not discuss individual personnel or student discipline records. We discuss only issues. And our board clerk will let me know when you're approaching the two minutes. If you have something in writing you're unable to finish, you're welcome to leave it with us and she will make sure that it's disseminated to all of the trustees. So having said that, I would like to welcome you back. I want to caution people, this is something that has been brought to my attention by other trustees. I would like you to silence your cell phones if you have not done so so far. And is there anyone who would like to address the board at this point? Identify yourself and speak to the next person.
We actually have you on.
You're the...
Yes.
Yes. You're actually under superintendent's report, so not to worry. Is there anyone who would like to address the board to have a comment right now? Okay. Then, very normal. I don't see a motion for the minutes of January ninth, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Are there any amendments or corrections for minutes of January ninth? Very none. All those in favor of accepting minutes of January ninth signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Which brings us to the superintendent's report. And I will turn the floor over to Dr. Catalino.
Okay. First thing on the superintendent's part, thank you, Sharon. And actually going to invite Dr. Parise to the podium to introduce his faculty or dear to the board.
I'm introducing two of my third grade teachers who have worked on...
Three.
Three, I'm sorry. This is Dennis. They've worked on a booklet. It's really been kind of a fun writing project that has made learning fun for some of the third graders. They want to present it and have some kids show what they've developed.
So one of the issues we've had in Robert Graves is our reading is going up and our math is fantastic, but we have issues with writing. So we thought that we'd put a little spin on it and have the kids become authors. So we went through school apps, they did school student treasures, and we created books in our third grade consulting rooms. And they didn't want to do like a kid-like theme, so my class chose me to change because of what's going on in the world. And my class chose if I could give the world a gift. So for my class is Colin Whitaker, and he's going to read to you the dedication.
Dedication to all the children who want to be the change. Be inspired by Colin. To take part in the change, you must first be inspiring. In order to be inspiring, you need to be happy. Also help someone to be happy or even have a man to be a model, to be inspired. Be someone who creates something cool and another can update it. Join us and be the change.
And we have one student that we want to read. We're going to give you the whole book again, and you can just return it when you guys are done with it. But this one, we thought sums it up with what we tried to do today at Robert Graves by being diverse. So would you do it, please?
To take part in the change, you must be first be diverse. To change the world, you have to be diverse. Like, don't hang out with same people. That's just boring. Hang out with people that have different skin color, different religion, and different culture. Hang out with kids who are funny and kind and respectful. Hang with people who make life better. Come join us and be the change.
I just also want to give Ms. Dennis, she did the illustrations on the front. Because if we had done it, she's our pre-lead. So if I could give the world a change, this is, or a gift. This is Carrie.
If I could give the world a gift, I would give the people shelter. Because part of the world does not have good shelter. The people who are poor do not have good homes. They sleep on the ground where they don't wear anything else.
So she would give shelter. Our next one is by a student, Nora Lopez, who's going to be here today.
If I could give the world a gift, I would take away...
Racism.
Racism. It hurts people and their feelings when you treat people differently because of their hometown or where they came from. Sometimes people do and say things without knowing what it means, but it still hurts. I want to do...
It's a whole bunch of different ones, but we thought, you know, you can read them at your leisure. We'll be at Robert Graves, I'll be there in the next ten years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You appreciate it.
Okay, next in the superintendent's report, we have Mr. Clapper, who's going to just build his grounds in the home report.
Hello, everybody. How are you doing? So it's been busy. We are starting to paint things over there, and the board is going down. It's a wonderful thing. I don't have a lot of pictures because it's pretty much pictures of the same things. So last week we showed you the tile, and now we have the fixture set, the bathroom, both the ADA bathroom in the hallway by the library and the new ADA bathroom in the pre-K area is done. The HVAC units are all hung, and most of them have all the ducts hung to them. The electric is moving along, they have a whole second floor completely wired. The first floor is just about wired, and all the communication cables are back to the racks. Our IT department supplied the racks, and they're putting pieces and parts together for that. Last week we showed you a guy with about ten bricks out of that wall. The wall's gone, as far as it's going to be on, and that's for the conference room on the first floor. This is the rooms that we showed last week, or two weeks ago, that were just taped, that are all painted upstairs. Probably eighty-five percent of upstairs is painted right now. New windows, yay! First two are in. And tomorrow they're going to get approved by the architect, and they'll continue on. They run into a few little glitches about squareness of the openings and whatnot, but everything's working well with that. Again, more electric, all the wires have come back. We have a generator over there that's going to supply power not only to the IT department, but we have emergency lights on at the boiler heat so we can operate no matter what the conditions are. This is an odd picture because today, this is actually at the high school, we did the walkthrough for Phase Two, which is on the streets. The date is coming, I believe it's the February twenty-eighth. These are all contractors, but when you expand it to a full slide, you just get the back of a guy wearing a red jacket. But we had good participation today. We had about thirty contractors there, and it went well. We walked all the way around the site, we went into main, we went to the boiler rooms and everything, and there was a lot of good questions. We're down to, we have about a week and a half to get an addendum out, and we're going to put out an addendum for environmental issues that were brought up on the front and a little bit of mechanical work. The other issue that's happened last week was a lot of snow and ice, and I just want to really thank my crew who were out in force just about every night, and it was some interesting conditions out there, and they worked really hard to get everything up and running for everyone. And thank Dr. Catalino also, who called about five o'clock every morning last week, so he got him better also. Other things that are going on in the district, we had a meeting today to finalize the five-year plan. We're still waiting for approval from the state. We got the comments back. We're planning on having, well, the comments will be submitted back to SED next Monday, and we're expecting that we will have approval by, I think he said March first, we're thinking March first. So, and we're working on just cleaning up the documents and getting them done. And that's about it. Interesting, I didn't realize that it hit the papers. People were calling me and asking me to clean up the high school. We had a little incident on Saturday. A piece of insulation on the bridge going to the fieldhouse blew over with the wind. The cold air got above the ceiling and froze the sprinkler line. It split a one-inch ninety. At a hundred pounds pressure, a one-inch pipe delivers about thirty-eight gallons a minute. It was about forty-five minutes. You do the math. But I knew we were in trouble, I turned it off the Broadway and water was running out the Broadway. But again, I really want to thank Mike Brober and his crew, they were there. Mike was there for civil service testing, he was in the building by himself, and within twenty minutes, he had four or five guys there pulling water up with their water pickups, mopping, cleaning things up, getting ceiling tiles out. We put the pipe back together, turned the sprinkler back on, and everything worked out. And I think the gym floor is secure, it hasn't buckled at all. Definitely had some water on it and under it, but we got it up fast enough, but we did no damage to the floor.
Thank you. I would like to applaud... Any questions for Mr. Clapper?
Thank you, Scott. Okay, and last on the superintendent's report, and I know I usually do this first, so I apologize to Ms. Fitzgerald, I rearrange things here, but Ms. Fitzgerald's here, this is her presentation for Bailey Middle School.
Hi, everyone. Now, last year when I did my presentation, the video didn't work, so crap, man, we got a promise, it's going to work.
I saw it.
Okay, so Jay Watson, Bailey Middle School. Tonight, we're going to just go over a few things. Our organizational changes, our reading and math lab extensions, our disciplinary restorative practices, and our social emotional components that we have in place in our buildings, in our building. So we've had a lot of changes this year. I first want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the board, to Dr. Catalino for supporting the whole idea of getting a third administrator in the middle schools. I can tell you, it has made a huge positive impact in the building, and I know I can speak for Miller as well. You know, when I first started there, two years ago, Mr. Ursay, Dan and I would always talk, and it would be, and now that we can, I can sit back and reflect, it was like, it was a triage center, because we were always putting out fires and we never had time to really dive into things that we really wanted to work on and fix. And I know that, you know, I personally did not get to be an instructional leader that I wanted to be, and just adding our third administrator has made a world of difference, and we're able to breathe, we're able to do many different things, positive things. We're able to move mountains is what we're doing right now. So, thank you. So, Mrs. Nelson, please come up. She is our assistant principal for grades five and six. I'm sure that many of you know her. She was a former science teacher for many, many, many years. And Mrs. Heridia, she is our assistant principal for grades seven and eight, and she comes from a private school. And the great thing about this awesome team right here is that Mrs. Nelson, she's got that teaching background, and I can't tell you how many teachers appreciate having that knowledge. And Mrs. Heridia, she's got the counseling background, so she is able to relate to all of our students and the issues that they come to school with every single day. Before I go on to the next slide, I also want to just mention that we no longer have that eighteen, nineteen period schedule, as I'm sure you all know. We have a very clean, simple nine-period schedule, which has helped my office staff tremendously. You know, we're not scrambling as much to find teachers to cover classes, it's much easier. Also, when we had, you know, the eighteen, nineteen periods, we, and we had to cover a class, we would have a teacher in there for forty minutes, and then we'd have to get another teacher in there to cover the twenty minutes. So now what we have is we have a clean slate. We are able to just bring a teacher in for forty-two minutes. There's consistency for all of our students. And I'm sure that's going to save our district money.
I'm sure it does, yeah.
So also with the nine-period schedule, we were able to bring reading and math extension classes into that schedule. So in fifth and sixth grade, every class, every math class and English class now have either a reading block or a math block, every day. So with that, I just want to talk a little bit about data. So our reading and math blocks started right as soon as the gate opened, first day of school, our teachers started their reading extensions and also their math extensions. Now, with this information here, what typically happens is, in the fall, when they take their star reading tests, you know, they lose a little bit. And then what happens in the winter, they usually lose a lot. You see these scores usually drop. I don't know why. Are you questioning why they drop, or are you questioning that noise?
I was questioning it.
Okay, fine. So, as you can see, we didn't have that drop this year. We had almost all grades increase. So in fifth grade, from the fall, it was thirty-eight point five, they went up to forty-three point five. Now, I will tell you upfront that sixth and eighth grade did drop, and there's a couple of reasons for that, that I'm thinking, and there's also ways to fix that as well. One of the reasons, I believe, is that sixth grade, fifth grade, they're elementary teachers. They're used to teaching reading. Sixth grade, they kind of got away from, you know, teaching, reading, guided reading, things like that. So they were just really starting all over again at the beginning of the year. So what we are now putting in place to increase sixth grade and eighth, seventh grade, I'm sorry, sixth and seventh, is we now are going to be starting the secondary instructional coaches and the elementary instructional coaches are going to be collaborating with each other, so they can go back and they can help our sixth grade teachers and our seventh grade teachers. Also, what they're doing is, the secondary instructional coaches are actually going to the elementary schools, and they're going to be doing site visits for third and fourth, in third and fourth grade reading classes. So they're going to get to see firsthand what goes on in that reading instruction. And also, the elementary instructional coaches will be coming up to secondary to actually, you know, do hands-on with our teachers. So this is just another view of the growth. So again, fifth grade jumped from thirty-eight point five to forty-three point five. In sixth grade, we've got a little work to do, but I am very, very confident that that's going to increase again in the spring.
Can I just ask a quick question? I'm confused about the instructional coaches. What level is working with, I mean, sixth grade is technically elementary.
It is.
So is a secondary coach working with them, or the elementary coach working with them?
Both of them. So what's going to happen is, all the ELA instructional coaches, elementary and secondary, they're going to be collaborating together, okay? And they're going to be bringing those ideas back in to sixth grade, okay? And elementary's going to be coming into sixth grade, so third, fourth grade instructional coaches, they're going to be coming into the classes and working with the sixth grade classes and our secondary instructional coaches who come into Bailey, come into Miller, okay? Did I answer your question? Okay. All right. So with this, this is just another way that we're able to hone in on our students' skills. So what's happening is, you can see that we have nineteen students right now that are reading five or more grade levels above. And the good thing about this is that this one right here, fifty-six students are reading zero, or at grade level or a half a grade below. I can't do it now, but if I was to click on that bar right there, I would be able to see which students are reading at this level, and I can see the deficits that they have and what strategies we have to work on. This is a great tool. is we now are going to be starting the secondary instructional coaches and the elementary instructional coaches are going to be collaborating with each other, so they can go back and they can help our sixth-grade teachers and our seventh-grade teachers. Also, what they're doing is, the secondary instructional coaches are actually going to the elementary schools, and they're going to be doing site visits for third and fourth, in third and fourth grade reading classes. So they're going to get to see firsthand what goes on in those, in that reading instruction. And also, the elementary instructional coaches will be coming up to secondary to actually, you know, do hands-on with our teachers. So this is just another view of the growth. So again, fifth grade jumped from thirty-eight point five to forty-three point five. In sixth grade, we've got a little work to do, but I am very, very confident that that's gonna increase again in the spring.
Can I just ask a quick question? I'm confused about the instructional coaches, what level is working with the, I mean, sixth grade is technically elementary.
It is.
So is it, is the secondary coach working with them, or the elementary coach working with them?
Both of them. So, what's going to happen is, all the, all the ELA instructional coaches, elementary and secondary, they're gonna be collaborating together, okay? And they're gonna be bringing those ideas back in to sixth grade, okay? And elementary's going to be coming into sixth grade, so third, fourth grade instructional coaches, they're going to be coming into the classes and working with the, with the, with the sixth-grade classes and our secondary instructional coaches who come into Bailey, come into Miller, okay? Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
All right. So, with this, this is just another way that we're able to hone in on our students' skills. So what's happening is, you can see that we have nineteen students right now that are reading five or more grade levels above. And the good thing about this is that this one right here, fifty-six students are reading zero or at grade level or a half a grade below. I can't do it now, but if I was to click on that bar right there, I would be able to see which students are reading at this level, and I can see the deficits that they have, and what strategies we have to work on. This is a great tool for our teachers, and we just got this a little while ago. So, we're really excited to be able to dive in and get deeper into this data that we need. Okay, math. As you can see, we have also gone up in our math. So for fifth grade, we went from fifty-one point three to fifty-nine point one, fifty-two point six, we dropped to fifty-four point eight in sixth grade. Seventh grade was forty-four, forty-five point nine, they stayed the same. And eighth grade, forty-one point four, we jumped to forty-seven point one. And that's just showing our fifth and sixth grade because of our math extension. Put them separate. And again, this is the same kind of graph, except with our math. You know, I can click on one of those bars, and we can see where the students' deficits are, and which students they are. Disciplinary and restorative actions. All right. Now, before anybody sighs, all right? I'm actually pretty excited about this data, because last year, we, you know, for our in-school suspension, we had a hundred and seventy incidents of in-school suspension. Yes, this year, we did go up by fourteen students, but the thing is, we have students in ISS right now, but they're able to get out earlier. So if they're doing, if, you know, if they're put in for a whole day, they might not have to be in there for that whole day. They're reflecting, they write, you know, a sheet, or if we do some kind of restorative, whether it be an apology note or a reflection piece of paper, you know, we have a conference, they're able to get out of that. So, there were a hundred, last year, there were a hundred and thirty-seven students who had a hundred and seventy incidents. Thirty-three of them were repeaters. This year, we had a hundred and eight students who were part of these incidents, and we had forty repeat offenders. Out-of-school suspension is very exciting, because last year, we had seventy-seven incidents that required out-of-school suspension, and this year, we've only had thirty-eight so far. Last year, we had sixty students involved, this year, we only had thirty-three. Seventeen were repeats, and we only had five repeats this year. So something's happening. And, long-term suspensions, last year, we had nine long-term suspensions. This year, we've only had two. And this is the same timeframe, so this is from September of this year to now, September to February last year. And last year, we had one repeat offender for a long-term suspension. And what are we doing for restorative practices? I am actually going to be turning this over to Ms. Heridia.
Hello, everyone. So some of our numbers have been able to decline because of some of the practices that we have. And so, the community, the reflection piece kind of goes in with the restorative conferences. And so, the student and the teacher gets to talk about the offense and how it affected the community, how affected the classroom, how the impact it had on the classroom. And so, the student is able to talk about the offense, to process it with the teacher, and at the same time, be able to make things right. A lot of times, the students are willing to participate after a little bit of coaching, and so they're provided a safe environment to do so, whether they feel comfortable in my office, or in a larger room, in a conference room, or anywhere they feel comfortable to have that conference. Some of the students do participate, and some don't, and that's why, you know, unfortunately, they end up in ISS or some other disciplinary measures are taken. But most of the students love the opportunity to actually speak with the teacher, to kind of get them to understand, well, this is why this happened, you know? I'm triggered by this, and this was a result of it. And again, giving the student an opportunity to make things right with their teacher. We also have community circles. It's usually done in the morning, sometimes it's best to have it, you know, kids come into the classroom, the first thing they want to do sometimes is kind of debrief and talk to their friends if they didn't get an opportunity. But this, again, is a safe environment for them to get into a circle, it's student-driven, the teacher's just there to facilitate, they talk about whatever issues that, or concerns they have within their community, within a classroom, within a school. And again, it's student-driven, and it empowers them, it motivates them to want to do well. And so we have also the Peaceful Guardian Project, which is a Kingston-based project, and I'm actually working with them, it's, it's been going pretty well. They came yesterday to recruit a few more students. And that's an opportunity for the kids to kind of figure out, what do I want to do with my life? How do I give back to the community? How do I become a role model for others? How do I inspire other kids in the community to want to do well and to grow and be in charge of my own growth? And so the kids leave that program with a sense of, you know, like, a sense of being a great leader and being looked up to in their community. They have the opportunity to visit places that they may never get to see in their lifetime, and they, they're followed by mentors, and they're guided throughout the entire program. The behavioral contract usually happens when a kid gets a referral, when it's a consistent behavior issue. That's not really, I would say, I wouldn't say it's minor, but it's enough to cause attention. And so, I would usually work with the kids to figure out, what behavior do you actually want to work on? What's the, what's the targeted behavior? So, I have an opportunity to talk with the teacher before I actually talk to the students, to kind of guide them to what behaviors they would like to work on, and what they, what's the reward? And it's, I run, some of the kids are like, you know, I want belly bucks, another kid is like, you know, I just want quiet time. You know, could I just have my lunch upstairs, or could I have it in a different room, could I have it with my teacher? And so they work towards correcting those behaviors. And the contract just fills out clear expectations, what's expected of you as a student, and what's also expected of the teacher, how does the teacher help you to reach those goals? And I'll turn this over to Ms. Nelson to talk about the reverse recess and the programs that we have.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to also thank you, as Ms. Fitzgerald has already, for implementing the three administrator model in the middle schools. It is like a second family to be a part of that, this building, and I'm just so grateful that you let me here. So, reverse recess is a strategy, a restorative strategy approach, that we developed pretty quickly when we started realizing, when I started realizing as a rookie administrator, that the bulk of our incidents that resulted in detention or ISS tended to happen during lunch or recess. And in order to get those numbers down, and also encourage reflection in the process, and motivate students to change those behaviors that led them in the past to detention or rising ISS rates, to, what we have is reverse recess, where they go to recess first, and then they eat lunch second, which is opposite of the regular model where students eat lunch first, and then they go out to recess second. So, students who have reverse recess are not with their classmates, the bulk of their classmates during recess, but they still have recess, they still have an opportunity to play outside. But then I get an opportunity to meet with them when they come in, and we reflect, and we look through and take a look at the situation, they identify the issue, and we reflect and plan for when future issues arise, how are we gonna handle them differently? So, PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. Two of the ones we wanted to highlight tonight are check-in, check-out, and student ambassadors. So our check-in, check-out program is for our students who are experiencing academic or social difficulties. They have a check-in teacher that they meet with, they meet with them each morning, they develop their, they look at their goals for the day, and then they get their sheets that they take to each of their classes, each of the teachers fill it out, give them a score or a rating as to whether or not they met their goals, and they bring it back to that check-out teacher at the end of the day. They have a reflection, reflective conversation, the student drinks a worm home, then they bring it back the next day signed by the parent or guardian. Our student ambassadors is a wonderful thing that we have. These are student volunteers who participate in various community-building activities, such as giving new students tours and help them feel more part of our community. And also, some of our students who have been a part of the community sometimes don't feel that they are, you know, as involved as they would like to be. So these students have volunteered their time to help them feel more welcome. Wild Earth is a, you know, it's, the staff of Wild Earth really work on developing mentoring relationships with our students, and they do this through games, interactive play, and also just having really nice conversations about how to handle difficult situations as they arise. And there's so much, so many more pieces to these things. Peaceful Guardian Project, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Fitzgerald.
Well, Peaceful Guardian, we already did that.
Yeah.
Social groups, Ms. Fitzgerald.
So, the social group should have a boys and a girls social group, and that's what it is, a social group. Again, it's, you know, it's a safe environment where kids could talk to other students that are experiencing the same things as them. I do have a girls' program that I do, they stood me up today, that I have where we talk about different issues, we talk about things that are concerning them within their community. Right now, we're talking about self-esteem and self-concept. And a lot of that surrounds some of the dysfunction and some of the issues that they get into, the arguments, you know, the girl fights, the petty stuff. And so, they have an opportunity, opposites, you know, get together, and they find out that they have so much in common, and it actually helps to build relationships and build, you know, a sense of community with each other. Sometimes we still have little hiccups, but we have to work with it, they're adolescents. And so, it's been a great opportunity for them. And within that group, I've definitely noticed a decline in behavior in referrals. So, it's been a great opportunity for our students to have these social groups that, where they feel safe, and there's no judgment for them.
Okay, now I'll talk. So, I'm gonna skip the Do Better Today program, I'm gonna talk about that in a few minutes. But, right now, we had the opportunity to bring Ulster Bosse's behavioral specialists into our building, which has been fantastic. What they do is, I pick out certain teachers that might have some issues with classroom management, students that are rambunctious, and they have worked with the stu, with the teachers for probably, I'm gonna say, five, six weeks. And then also what they do is, they come to our faculty meetings once a month, and they answer questions that teachers have put in in advance. So if a teach, so we have an Office 365 thread going through, and it's our behavioral specialist. So teachers will go through there, and they'll ask questions like, you know, I can't get this student to do this, you know, this student, no matter what I do, you know, he always wants to pick, you know, and have the last word. So they come in, they've reviewed the question, they come in and they talk about ideas on how to get that child motivated, how to address particular behaviors. And it really has been a success. Now, what we're going to be doing is, we are not going to be going with teachers specifically anymore, but we're going to hone in on specific students that, you know, teachers are having a difficult time with, and have them work with the students. Staff Buddy Talks, are you okay, Ms.?
Go ahead. So, the Buddy Walks is really focused on the adults in the building, our teachers, teaching assistants, social emotional support for us. It's an opportunity, at the end of the week, we meet at the library, we take a walk around the building, it's very informal, just walk about, pair up, get in groups, and just walk around the building, and just have that opportunity that you would think in, in a building full of eleven hundred people, you would have so many of those opportunities, but the days just, if you're teaching, you just know, it just goes, and you just don't get that opportunity. So we've built it in as an intentional thing at the end of each week where we meet, and we just walk about and develop ideas, and just have an opportunity to deepen that.
So we just completed a book study, How to Reach the Heart to Teach, and it really is about trauma, and how to reach those students that have so much going on in their lives. So we've been, we've been able to incorporate some of those strategies that we have gotten from our book study, bringing it into the classrooms. You know, we talk about it in our faculty meetings, and, you know, going back to our behavioral specialists, on our last Superintendents Day, they came to us, and really, the whole day was about trauma, and how to deal with all of the trauma that our students go through, most, many of our students. And how we got the Staff Buddy Walks was because the behavioral specialist, Mike, you know, he made the, a very good point, you know? The students come in with so much baggage and so much PTSD, that, you know, our teachers are getting it too, because they're the ones that have to deal with all of this tragedy and listen to it, and, you know, over and over again. So they also need an outlet. So that was one of the reasons why we started that Staff Buddy Walks, just to make sure that, you know, our teachers are doing okay and have a place to vent. Our Do Better Today program, so last year, when I presented, I told you that we were offered, we got a grant of twelve thousand dollars, I think it was, to bring in DBT, dialectical behavior therapy into our building. And what we were doing last year, and that was through the Benedictine Health Foundation, so what we were doing last year is, we took like five students from, for the first quarter, we would do five students in eighth grade, and we would have a person from a Betty Partial program, they would come in, and they would work with those five students twice a week from 2:30 to 3:30, and just teach them dialectical behavior therapy strategies, just how to release stress, and talk about, you know, your emotions and what stage you're at, and realizing and recognizing where they are. So this year, I went to them again and said, you know what? I think that my sixth graders really would benefit, all of my sixth graders would benefit those strategies, learning how to understand what emotion they are in. So, last year, they gave us twelve thousand, this year, they gave us approximately a little over fifteen thousand dollars. So not only do we have, you know, the, the small groups on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we also have it for the entire sixth grade. So I know Miller has a very similar program that's run by the family of Woodstock. We're still using, we're going to be using the Benedictine Health Foundation. A couple of the therapists are through the Betty Partial, but different people, same thing. They're doing the same exact thing. And it really has worked out well. So what I have on the next two slides are videos, because really, they could say it much better than I can. So the first video is going to be, as long as it works, is going to be my teachers.
Hi, I'm Andrea Bass, I teach sixth grade here at Jay Watson Bailey Middle School. Andrea Barnhart, sixth grade integrated teacher. And I'm leading grants, I teach sixth grade math design. So we recently have experienced a program pushing into our classrooms for eight weeks, called the Do Better Today Program, we call it DBT. And some of the things that we've liked, that our students and that staff members also got out of DBT, include things like how to self-regulate, how to recognize when we're feeling stressed, and kind of what to do when you have stress, and what's the next step. But also thinking about the things we can control versus the things that we can't control, and how we respond to them. She also used meditation techniques, she started the program, and I believe she also ended And I believe she also ended the program with a check-in where she would ring a bell and they had to see how long they could listen to the bell. And then they did some breathing and meditation techniques to help them check in with each part of their, their being, both emotionally and physically. Which I think helps tie into teaching, yes. It does. Because we do teach our kids to become aware of how they're feeling if they're feeling stressed, you know, where they might be feeling that stress, what might be causing it, and then how to address it. And so what are some techniques that they can use? And so this program provided them with some great techniques that we can refer to when they're feeling that way. But also us knowing that, you know, they have other things going on. It's very hard for them to take care of their learning, so this helps them to deal with, you know, the other things that are going on and using those strategies that they were taught in DBT. So hopefully, they're better able to focus on their academics and others.
And this is, this is a little panel of the students that actually participated in DBT. And I promise, I'm waiting for you to put up the card. Another four minutes.
What I liked about the Do Better Today program was the teacher, her job, because if there was a question that not just me, anybody wanted to know, she would fit time into each person's question instead of like skipping people, which I, I don't get enough time to talk on, in some classes or just don't get picked at all to actually express my ideas. And I felt like she was really enthusiastic about things and, yeah. I liked that she had us just take a minute to focus on a certain thing to like clear our minds. It was very peaceful and it was quiet and that's what I liked about it. I liked how if you were kind of in a situation and you didn't know how to really connect to something, she was kind of like there to help you and like say, "Take a deep breath, think about this, think about that, how you can do better today and make it even better tomorrow," how you can do something, you could build what essence of your character just to move up in life and how you can just make it better.
I learned how to relieve stress when I was angry or feeling sad. She taught us how to relieve that stress and I really thought that was helpful.
I learned more about mindfulness and like how to express mindfulness and what it means.
What I learned is how like if you're in a situation, as I said before, instead of going in an angry way and then instead of going in a push away and getting into an argument and making it, you know, to something bigger, you have a way to say, "Okay, we can resolve this in a different way" instead of either getting you yelling or starting putting hands and nobody ever resolves to anything but peace and mindfulness and mindfulness.
I learned that, well, I actually learned more about myself, like more about how to be peaceful and stuff like around that area. I learned that like ways of like calming yourself down and like using mindfulness in a, like in a veteran, you need to calm down.
I kind of learned more about if I'm quiet and I'm more focused on my surroundings, I can hear a lot more than what I'll usually hear.
So we really do have a lot of things going on at Valley. Some things we're still working on to improve, I think that we're really on the right track and I'm really proud of this team right here. And I'm proud of all the students that are in that building right now, as well as the teachers, because they really are working hard. And, you know, this year, we have taken the time to really, you know, talk about and understand all of the trauma that our students are going through. And the teachers are taking it serious. So, I'm not going to speak anymore, I'm just going to answer questions.
So this program is, is an after school but also for sixth graders?
Yes, so I'm glad you asked that question, because I just wanted to clarify that. So all of my sixth graders are getting this. So they go in every, Michelle Bertelli, she goes in every Thursday and she works with all of the teach, all of the sixth grade teachers. So every student is getting them, getting it. And then in addition to those students who are high at risk, who are, you know, constantly getting into trouble, out on the playground, out on the recess, they, they still can't regulate their emotions, they are coming in and working Tuesdays and Thursdays with Michelle and Marie Schultes. So we just finished up the fifth graders, so now we're moving on. We just started with our sixth grade students. And next quarter, it will be our seventh grade students.
So the sixth graders are just getting this now?
Small group, small group. And they've been getting it, they've had seven weeks so far of, of Thursdays, you know, and it's all, it's all day. So they might go into, she might go into Mr. Gallagher's class, first period, this week, tomorrow. And then she's going to go into Mrs. Fina's class, second period, tomorrow. And then she does that with all of these sixth grade teachers. So everybody's getting it.
Are these students, are they sixth graders or?
They are, yep. These are the ones that have had it all year so far, for, well, for not all year, but eight weeks.
I, I'm very excited that you're integrating reading and math back into the regular day for, for the sixth grade students. And I just wonder if some of the resources that were there when I, I'm so old, we used to teach reading, math period, or during the day in every sixth grade classroom, we had a treasure trove of leveled books.
We do.
Oh, good.
We have, and I, and I don't mean this in a negative way, I mean this in a great way. We have closets of leveled books and, and teachers are just utilizing it.
So it's just a matter of those people who have not used them before, developing strategies to use them.
Correct. So, so like, for example, you know, all of our teachers in fifth and sixth grade, our ELA teachers, I should say, you know, they are breaking up into reading groups, all right? So fifth, fifth period, or fifth grade, their reading and math extension is first period. Sixth grade, their math and reading extension is sixth period. So I'll just use fifth grade as an example. So fifth grade, first period, half of the students do their reading block, say on ACE days. Those same students would get math extension on BDF days, okay? But in those groups, the teachers have leveled groups. They're working individually with students, so they're pulling students aside like we used to do.
Right.
And reading with that student.
Very happy to see that.
Yeah.
Because we would like to see, I would like to see, greater success throughout the year. I know there's always, you know, going to be a drop in September, but, you know, the achievement levels, we want to see everybody succeeding.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I'm hopeful that that will happen. And I also congratulate the team, because it's interesting to see three different personalities meld as one powerful unit, so I'm really happy that that has worked out.
We do, we do have three different personalities. Anything else?
So I'm just very happy to see the focus on trauma and social emotional support. And I'd like to congratulate, and it just seems from what you've, what you've told us that it's really benefiting not only the students but also the staff. And I think that's really important. And so I'd like to congratulate the building administrators, but also the Seoni administrators for enabling this. I know it's something that we've been talking about for many, for several years now. And it's good to see that it's taking hold.
It's definitely taking hold. That's, you deal with it every day. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, last thing on the superintendent's report would be a very preliminary budget development report from Mr. Olson and I believe Ms. Porter. We are, we are a little early, but I think, you know, this is actually an 12-month a year process. And you know, the government's proposal came out last month and Mr. Olson, for some reason, is carrying it.
Like concussion, just complete concussion.
This should be interesting.
Oh, my lord.
Sorry.
I just want to point out that Mr. Clapper left that math problem unsolved earlier. It was about 1,700 of these. Since this is all about children, we're going to, sorry, it's on these. Four girls are going to be competing tomorrow in purchase in a string quartet competition.
I would look at the fiscal stress monitor every year. We talked about the fiscal stress monitor last year. At this time, so we decided to do a quick review of that. The fiscal stress monitoring system basically designates districts where their level of fiscal stress is, both environmental factors and fiscal factors.
Last year, we had eight designations of susceptible to environmental. This year, this year, as you can see, our score designation zone.
Certain factors that we don't have any control over, poverty level, the percentage of economically disadvantaged students, that's where 8.33% of our points come from. We also have points resulting from a decrease in our tax base and change in the property value, a decrease in the property value, and also an increase in English language learners. I think that percentage is between, if it's under 9% growth over the course of the last couple of years, you, they can do a 5% score for that, for that factor. Last year, our score was 20, it was 33.33 points for the fiscal, the environmental designation, which put us in susceptible. And 10 points, additional points that we had last year was as a result of a lower budget turnout, budget approval rate. So that 10 points was eliminated this past year.
So I think the L's is not actually growth, I think it's the number of L's. And I think the next time they do this, that number is going to be a lot higher than 5%. Perhaps Station, you could tell somewhere, we have right now. Over 700, that's more than 10% of our population.
So we will lose, so in the, in next year, that probably will see that go up to additional points.
This number will be much higher next year. So in fiscal as last year, we have no designation. And this year, we have no points at all, because everything is in good order per the Office of State Controller. I thought I'd just focus for a second on, on the second one, they have total fund balance. Sometimes I think probably, well, I don't know if it's ever crossed your mind, but we have 4% unassigned fund balance, and then we have tax sorcery, and we have capital fund, et cetera. So sometimes you might, someone might think that, "Oh, we have a lot of reserves, it's really great." Well, let me just show you the next slide to show you how we look compared to everybody else. So we're 21.23, this is the county, as of the same report. And we're actually below the average of the county, interestingly. And you can see, Aniora and Welkell have huge percentages. The state average of 678 districts is actually, we're below the state average. And there's actually 121 districts over 40% and three districts all in Suffolk County who are over 100%, which means that they could get no revenue for all the year and still operate. So it's kind of remarkable. Some of these districts tend to be real small, so that's, excuse things a little bit, this is not a weighted average, it's just a simple average. So then there's school funding. That made this cartoon out.
This was an excerpt out of Questar State Planning Conference workshop that Ann and I attended this morning. And the next, this slide and the next slide were just two slides that just are an overview of the governor's proposal and the amount of aid to education and the increase in aid to education. And in this one, how's the aid distributed? This just breaks the aid down, the total increase, 955 million in the governor's proposal, this breaks it down between foundation aid and the other formula-based aid. We'll show in a minute what our, what our portion of that is. A formula-based aid would include all of our computerized aids, which are driven by expenditures, and building aid, which is driven by our building projects. And this is our analysis, there's a lot of information there, I know. This is our analysis of the, of the state aid run from the governor's office. The first column shows what our current budget is, what we have in the current 18, 19 budget. And we have broken down our aid into various categories. The basic state, state formula is the first category, subcategory. And then below that, we have the Bosse's aids to disabilities, software, textbook, library, hardware, and then other aid, local share. The local share, I'll just point that out, it's a minus. And why do we have a minus in an aid category? Well, there's certain students that are in certain situations that the state pays for them or other district pay for them, and the state charges us back. And those would be foster students in other districts, homeless students in other districts, and incarcerated youth. So every year, we can deduct some up to between $300,000 and $400,000 for those students.
So the fourth column is the variance between the first column and the third column, the budget that we're currently operating under and our grant budget proposal. And you can see that our grant proposal is lower than the executive proposal, because the executive proposal makes some assumptions in terms of aid that are, that are not fundamentally correct for probably every district than ours in particular. So we correct it as best we can.
Right, the executive budget proposal shows aids based on current expenditures and what, or actually, some of the expenditures we're basing on 16, 17. One of, one of the factors in the executive budget proposal that we really have to look carefully at, and they stress this at the state planning workshops, is that some of the things like transportation aid and building aid, we really have to look at them carefully, because the information that the state, we don't really get building aid until we final file, final cost reports, but the state generates, the state calculates that estimated building aid assuming that every project you had out there would be completed. So if you look at our state aid run, and it looks like there's all this extra money, some of that building aid, we won't get until those projects are actually completed. So there is a little discrepancy there, and we recognize that, because if we budgeted for that and we don't actually get the aid, because we recognize the fact that we're not going to get that, or the transportation aid, or the Bosse's aid, because they're based on our actual expenditures, not a budget or an estimate paid by the state, we would come up short quality in the revenues. And so we're very cautious and analyze those very closely in each of those categories. So the total, the foundation aid is based So the total, the foundation aid is basically the aid that is given to us that is gonna cover all of our expenses in general funds. And the total aid, uh, foundation aid increase was eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, but as you can see, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand of that is set aside for community schools aid. So really, our new money is only five-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. The additional money in building and, well, the, the building and reorganization incentive was the former name, but all of ours is gonna be building aid, is gonna offset our increases in our debt service for the projects that we have. BOSI's aid too, we have an increase, we're gonna have to look at these numbers, actually, the building aid and the BOSI's aid, we're gonna be looking at more closely over the course of the next few weeks, and those numbers could change also. But the total of all the aid categories with those estimates is one-point-eight million dollars.
So I'd like to point out that this is not, the exercise that we go through, and by "we," I mean mostly "that" goes through, is, is not an exercise in just reducing what the governor says. You can see that in some cases, there are reductions, in some cases, there are increases. So it's trying to make it right. Uh, you can see the biggest increase is right here. So, it's trying to get it, get it right, and in this case, uh, sixteen, six-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-dollar difference, you know, which is, uh, about one percent, but again, it's, uh, I'm sort of about to be pretty much an expert in this, so, uh, I'm definitely cross on state aid. So here's the tax level and the calculation, and here are the last three. As you may recall, one-point-three-five, uh, last year, our levy limit was three-point-six, but we didn't levy three-point-six, we levy, it's about two? Oh, two-sixty-two, I'm sorry. We levied two-sixty-two last year against the limit. When the one-thirty-five was in, we actually levy only one-point-oh-six. This year, we're at two-point-oh-seven, and that could go down, we're still working on it, on this. But I suspected we were at two-point-oh-seven, for example, or thereabouts. Um, I, I'm expecting that my recommendation, the business office's recommendation, is that we levy that.
Oh, so we'd like to point out a couple of things.
Okay.
On this. The two-point-oh-seven, uh, is driven of primarily by the capital tax levy, the number below, that number right there. The actual, the figures that we have, the tax, the tax base base growth factor, which was just released a few weeks ago, and the allowable growth factor, the actual, the CPI is over two percent, but it's max at two percent. So the difference between the one-oh-three, five-oh-four, the tax levy limit for exclusions, and the one-oh-one, which is about, how many did I add? One-point-eight million.
Between those two, yeah, one-point-eight.
One-point-eight million really is the amount of additional levy that we can, that has to cover things other than our debt service tax levy for the, for the, um, for the total. So the two, the two-point-seven in capital tax levy is the difference between our current debt service and our estimated aid, and that number can change. That number, we're, we're, we're gonna be working on that over the course of the last, over the next couple of weeks. Uh, today, we received notice, I filed for an early aid start on the field house, even though the field house, the cost report won't be done until into next year, but by filing for early aid, we can start that aid flowing now. Um, so we haven't had the amortization scheduled, but we did receive the approval today, so we will get half of the aid payment for the field house this year, and a full payment for the field house beginning next year. So, we might be tweaking that number for the capital tax levy, which will have an increase or decrease on the maximum allowable levy increase, but we'll also be changing the budget at the same time, so that the amount that we're over or under the tax levy shouldn't change.
It's complicated. Two-point-oh-seven today, could change. So some of our assumptions we're working with, the retirement rate for teachers for the next year is eight-point-eight-six percent, that's down a little bit. Employee, uh, retirement system, which is mostly, most everyone else who's a non-teacher is fifteen-point-five percent, and that's, some of you know that ERS rates are different depending on what, uh, what's it called?
Tier.
Tier, you're right, right. So, I can, that's a little tip, different, more difficult to calculate. Our health insurance rates, you know, it's early yet, but right now, um, they're, they look like they're going to be, you know, high enough, um, to be challenging. Estimated salary increases, uh, obviously, we have negotiations going on, just to try to nail some of that down. Debt service on the Second Century, uh, project, um, you know, we have to, we'll have to start paying for the Second Century Phase Two next year, because we're gonna be starting work in the summer, and, uh, we'll have to borrow some money, so we'll use bands prior to bonding. Uh, the governor's proposal for state aid, we went over that a couple of seconds ago. Some of you might have seen in the paper that there's a tax shortfall in the state, uh, that, that's been announced, two-point-three billion dollars. Who knows what impact that will have on legislators thinking, or the governor's thinking, but in any case, the other revenues that we know of are pretty stable. As Beth just mentioned, early aid on the field house, and right now, we've got a broken fund balance in this, in the model we're working on of two million dollars, which is, uh, where we're, uh, this year. Okay, so, these are some of the, um, we're working on this because there's a lot of, uh, there's some challenging numbers going on here. This is just BOSI's right here, three-point-two-seven million dollars, uh, budget to budget, and these are the components, and the biggest component is special and alternative education, which, uh, is a factor of who's entering the district and what their needs are. Luckily, on TRS and ERS, as I mentioned, the TRS rate is down, so that might mean some money on the, on the, on the good side, but then we've got transportation, health insurance, and salary expense, as best as we can estimate right now, so there's a big increase in just these categories, which are the main categories, um, budget to budget, that we're continuing to work on. The, uh, I'll point out the transportation for a second. The transportation, because of, uh, uh, foster, new rules on foster care and transportation with respect to foster care, um, with respect to hu, uh, homeless students who get placed within fifty miles, but in fairly distant places that we have to bring in, you're probably aware that we have to bus people in from as far as fifty miles. Um, and there's been some transportation routes this year that have been very challenging, and we've had it split because of the intensity. Um, so that's a, that's a, not the biggest number on this page, but, uh, an important one.
And just to point out also, this is seven-point-seven million, and our increase in state aid was one-point-eight.
Also on the ballot this year is a renewal of the warehouse lease that we're, uh, beginning to discuss with the, uh, with the owner, and then the election of, uh, three, I guess maybe four, like four, four, sorry, there's a typo on this slide, I don't remember who did that. It was definitely me, uh, so four members of the board. And then again, back to, this is why we do this stuff, although I don't really understand what is going on here, it looks like a, a can of, a carbonated beverage is being heated? I don't know.
I think it's elevated because of the candy.
Oh, okay.
The whole is the can of sliders.
So, anyway, I think all is well, otherwise, we would have heard about it. Any questions? Questions for?
About the warehouse lease, are we negotiating along the fight here?
Yes, uh, we don't really have a good option, so.
Is it the same base?
We're hoping so, but it's not guaranteed right now.
And there's actually some extra square footage available that we're considering, correct?
Yes, yes, there is, um, that we might, that we could probably use for our storage right, like, uh, which is getting to be more and more premium in the district, but we'll see about that too.
One of the things that the visitation committee has said over and over again at facilities is that when asked, a lot of our building, you know, custodians and principals are saying, "storage." So, if we can get a little extra space there, we might want to bring, we might bring the board to an increase in that, you know, the cost, but also an increase in the square footage that will happen.
It's at the same site?
Same site.
Warehouse, yes.
Yeah. Mr. Clapper is, I, I think, then in this building, is encouraging people to dispose of things here. That we don't require, so that the move from here to Mahar will be a lighter one and acquire less storage at Mahar, so hopefully, we can, we'll accomplish some of that. I know Beth has been working hard to fill gigantic. Anything else?
If we can, do we gain any storage space at Mahar by having removed the boilers? I think the original panel is the boiler's dead place.
Yeah.
Yeah, the boilers are smaller, but I.
First of all, I guess we couldn't do, it's kind of, it's not very pleasant.
There is a basement.
How did Miss Ello, you have all of our tax records, your tax rolls from like, they're all the basement, and I think he said that's where they were gonna go.
Yeah, it's the tax rolls.
Tax rolls.
Anything else? Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Back to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any resolutions any trustee would like to move to the consent agenda? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Still move.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting consent agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Extinctions?
I'm interested.
Thank you very much, and, um, Mrs. Jordan?
I thought it was Mr. Spicer now. I was going to him.
Yeah. She likes to give Mr. Spicer the.
Next week, we'll, we'll.
Next week? Oh, we'll see, are we donations? Yeah.
Um, tonight, allow me happy to accept the generous donation from the Connect Kids Field Chip Lea Fund Grant Program in the amount of six-hundred-and-fifty dollars to Chambers School. I'm sure that they are very grateful for that. Thank you very much. You're very.
And then next week, next time, that's a decision.
And just one thing on the consent agenda, I do want to welcome Quinn Rathgen, who is here, and is a new social worker at Kingston High School. We're applauding you because you were appointed, and also because you have the perseverance to sit. Welcome.
Welcome. Okay. Uh, we have no committee reports this evening, so that brings us to old business. Is there any old business any trustee would like to raise at this point, old business?
Well, are the voting machines old business?
I think we're waiting on, um.
Another grant, yeah.
Yeah, information from, uh, attorneys, right? Yes?
No, we're just waiting on information at the roll book.
Hold it. Do you want to?
Well, we're also looking at information about using this game, right?
Right.
Not this year.
Not this year.
But, yeah.
And I, I just want the public to be aware that the, uh, Ulster County Board of Elections is trying to work with us to remedy the problem of not having the machine.
And we're, we're working to, to compromise and back and forth, so they can get what they need, because they do have new responsibilities around elections, but also still collaborate and, and share services that we need without costing the taxpayers, you know, having the taxpayers have to pay for two machines, picking one can look perfectly wrong.
Right.
We have a lot of proposals, so we have a chance to fight about it.
No, I think we'll do that after we have all the information tonight.
So the twentieth, um, we're advised that we could wait until the twentieth, tenth, on policy, but we'd still be six days out. I think it's that one. No, we're more than three days. We're all right. We're still okay. Any other old business?
I have one other old business.
Okay.
Well, I just thought it was interesting that I read in the paper that, I believe it's the Red Hook School District, which is going to phase in the age of kindergarten. So, I don't know if they were watching our last meeting, but I just thought it was, it was a good idea, and it's still been good, so I'm looking forward to this one.
I'm sure they all are. Thank you.
So we're gonna phase it back to September first?
Mm-hmm.
Little by little.
Excuse me?
Little by little.
Little by little, you don't begin.
They must have listened to you.
I thought so.
Any other old business? Okay. New business? Any new business?
Oh, wait, actually.
Yes.
We need to, um, spend some time thinking about the Fund of Education on the way, for Ulster County School Board Association, we do this every year, where we give an award to a member, someone's details, who has committed, um, a lot to the students and school district and community, and so when we honor that person and, um, nominations, our, our, our selection is due at the end of the month, correct?
It is, it's two by the twenty-second, so we still have this.
And then we can have a conversation, if we'd like to make a surprise, so, you know, if we're careful about that.
Do, do you want to appoint, or do you want volunteers to be on the nominated committee? We've done that in the past, that way, you know, to make recommendations of course.
Say we're gonna be a nominee committee? Oh, there you go, there's someone, there you go.
Okay. There you go. Okay. What do you think? Any other?
Board members have sent suggestions?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, please do. We have to, we have to get Mr. Spicer's email out of the running.
Yeah, we do need to get it.
But you can send it to me, I'd be happy to.
We'll take care of that tomorrow, and we'll communicate with Mr. Spicer.
Thank you. Any other new business? Board member announcements? All right, we've reached the second, have a treat for public participation, is there anyone who would like to approach, um, the podium and speak to the board at this point in time? Same rules as outlined before. All right, seeing no takers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.